All right, I call a meeting order. Stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have our invocation from Pastor Cynthia Arnold from the Swan and Oil Tabernacle United Methodist Church.
Good evening. Will you pray with me, please? Gracious and holy God, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity together as the citizens, the leadership, and the elected officials of the town of Black Mountain. We pray, Lord, for your spirit and your will to be done here in this space tonight. We ask that you grant open minds and open hearts and open ears to hear freely and honestly all that is said and done here today. Lord, we do thank you, and we ask that your will be done in all of these things as we continue to all strive for the best to be done for the town of Black Mountain. Lord, we do thank you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, I've got a few announcements here. First of all, I want to thank those people that are on Montreux Road who have gone ahead and have signed the easements for the sidewalk that goes from Cotton Avenue on up to East Street. So I think we've got them all. Do we have them all for that section?
Yeah.
All right, good, good. And then, of course, we'll have to, once we get that section done, then we'll begin proceeding on further up in front of Camp Mary Matt on the other side of the street from Camp Mary Matt, and then hopefully eventually all the way to the gate. But it is nice to see that these citizens were not asking for any money, you know, that they really wanted to cooperate, they really wanted to see this sidewalk put in. Another thing is the savings that the town achieved on the water taps on the State Street. You know, we've been working on that for several months, months now. And that is being done in anticipation of and when of the paving on US 70 down State Street. And so getting all this work done, you know, that's one of the things that in the past, coordination between DOT and municipalities was not that great, also with MSD, and so all of a sudden you pave a road, come back next thing, next week someone would come in and put a new sewer line in or a new water line in, and you have to patch it. So that's what we're trying to do, is get all these things out of the way. So we've gotten all the water taps out of the way, now MSD is doing its thing, and hopefully about the time they end to be about sometime in September.
That's what we're looking at now.
And then DOT will come in and do the, or bid out and have the paving done. But one of the things I want to recognize and let the town know, and hopefully this will be in the paper, that the cost savings on this, so many times in the past we bid things out, and there are certain times that it is good to bid things out, but then in this case, here's one that was great that we did it in-house. The bid price on this to do all that work up State Street was $186,720. We were able to do this for $71,280. So a total savings of 115, that's over $100,000 savings by us doing it ourselves. And my hat's off to Matt to oversee this project, and of course to Jamie and his crews for getting in there, and especially each time making sure they get in there after they do the tap, to come back to pack the sand that's in there and the dirt, and then make sure that it's filled in. I know it's got a little bit of a hump, but it's got to have a hump at first because it packs down, and then they come back and get it and get it paved. So I don't think there were that many times that, I did have one person complain one time about the very beginning, and then after that, though, it got paved quickly. So very good. Did a good job on that. Special thanks to the sponsors for the Black Mountain, for the fireworks show, the Black Mountains Swan and Oil Chamber of Commerce. These are folks that gave the money because of the town. Just to reiterate, we don't pay any money for the fireworks. This all comes from the private sector. And the Black Mountain Savings Loan contributed, Black Mountain Swan and Oil Chamber of Commerce, Exotic Countertops, Graybeard Property Management Sales, Harwood Home for Funerals, Hunters and Treasures, Ingalls Markets, Valley Truck Service, and White Insurance Agency. So thanks to them, we had another spectacular fireworks show. I thought it was excellent, so. Also, too, thanks to Mary Leonard for staying on top of the situation with DOT. She, with Matt, have been in touch with them to, on the Wildflower program, to help fix up our interchanges around the interchanges down on the interstate, and of course the entrance on both ends of the town. So that's not been completed, but at least we're beginning to work on it, and we're supposed to meet with Doug.
Well, fortunately, Mary Leonard was kind of to give us kind of a synopsis of what the vision was at those interchanges. I gave that to Doug McNeil, and they did budget for it, so they're going to now kind of draw up a plan to do it. They would do it in the fall, so we're hoping to have it done this fall.
Okay, very good.
The Rebuttification Committee.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Thanks, Mary Leonard, appreciate it. All right, those are the announcements I have. Now we have a citizen comment. First on here is Elaine Lotzenheiser. Elaine Lotzenheiser chooses not to speak. Julie White.
Julie White, 205 Ninth Street, and I'm Chair of the Black Mountain Greenway Commission, and I have a letter to read to the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. The Black Mountain Greenway Commission would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your recent support of greenway expansion in Black Mountain. We appreciate that you recognize the value of the greenway system for our town. Every time that we have our display at a public event, we are overwhelmed by the amount of public support there is for greenway development here. This reflects public sentiment, which has been expressed during visioning projects in town. We recognize that the cost of greenway development through the study area is high. However, we believe that the benefits are well worth it. Benefits of trails, of system, trail systems of city and town include more attractive communities, safer routes for bicyclists, pedestrian, and children going to school, higher property values and taxes. Businesses want to locate in the same kinds of communities that home buyers want to live in, places perceived as safe and attractive with opportunities for walking and trail activities. We are seeing continued use of our town greenways. Here are a few examples. Each February, there are two-foot races that utilize part of the greenway system. The yearly Valentine run draws close to 200 runners. Over 50 participants were Black Mountain residents in 2014. The Mount Mitchell Marathon and Challenge always sell out. Over 20 Black Mountain residents have historically competed in these races, with well over that number of residents volunteering to put on the races. At the Greenway Challenge in April, we had 213 registered runners and 26 volunteers. 50 Black Mountain residents participated either by running or volunteering, and 12 local businesses sponsored the race. During Walk to School Day in May, there was a steady stream of adults and students walking and riding down the Flat Creek Greenway to school. And in July for the last three years, Velo Girl Rides, a local business, has sponsored a bike ride to benefit the greenways. People come from across the country to attend these cycle-to-farm rides. In 2013, 397 people were involved either as riders or volunteers, with 44 of those being Black Mountain residents. In 2014, despite the heavy rain, there were 329 people involved with the same number of residents. Since 2013, Velo Girl Rides has had over 600 people participate in their bike rides, which start in Black Mountain, with 350 or 56% of those being town residents. And this only represents organized events. There is strong usage of our greenways on a day-to-day basis. The Black Mountain Greenway Commission supports moving on with further study and development of the greenway corridor being studied. We stand ready to help with public education and awareness, fundraising, and strategic planning. Again, thank you for your support for greenways. We look forward to working with you and town staff in the future to develop our greenway system.
Thank you for your time and effort on all this, Julie. Julie has been with the Greenway Commission since its conception back in the mid-'90s. So appreciate you sticking with it.
I appreciate your support.
Marilyn Stabanski, please.
The Hardware Recycle Collection is returning to this end of the county. It will be Saturday, September 13th, from 10 to 2, at the Ace Hardware, where it has been all the other times. The collections this time will include books, cardboard, electronics, metal, styrofoam, animal sanctuary items, and used cooking oil. If you have any questions, I will be putting flyers at the library and at the chamber, and downloadable for the actual Greenworks website, and direct any questions to them. Thank you.
Marilyn, just a quick one. I was speaking with you outside, and I was telling you about the little incident I had when I was borrowing my nephew's furniture truck, Chip, from Town and Country, how I was borrowing it, and he said, "Well, you can borrow it as long as you just clean it up." The guys just got finished delivering two bunk beds up into Montreux. Well, just to give you an idea, it took me 20 minutes to get all the styrofoam, the packing corners, the tape, the wrappings, break down the boxes. This is for two bunk bed sets. This is not a whole bedroom set. And the reason I go into detail on that is the fact that it is incredible, the amount of styrofoam that is coming into the country. I mean, then this just represents one sale that Chip had. And unfortunately, where does that stuff go? It goes in his dumpster, and it's hauled off to South Carolina. So maybe you could mention something to the different furniture stores, maybe a week or so in advance, they can't keep it for very long, but that maybe then they could bring some of that down.
Well, likely the furniture stores have volumes that would exceed our capacity at such.
How much capacity would you have there?
Such events, well, you'd have to contact the people now running it. We do host those, and Tyson does recycle there. Styrofoam and have done that for years, so people can get in touch with us, and we can share with them whatever we do.
Okay, I'll have Chip give you a call. Thanks. Next is Gus Jirdy.
Hello, thank you for your time. I am coming here to ask you to review and reconsider the closure of Locust Street. I have a lot on Locust Street to join Ms. Tuttle in retirement, I'm hoping, and plan to build a house there. When I purchased the property, it was a dead-end road, but there was a easement or a roadway going through down to Central Avenue. For those of you who don't know, maybe you all know Locust Street is off of Cragmont. It's past the lake, just up there before the Carver Center. It's on your left, and there is a new development, Locust Springs. And Locust Springs came to you all and said, "Hey, look, we're coming in from Central Avenue," which is down kind of on the lower end. They want, they came up that way, and then they built a cul-de-sac, and in order to do that, they had to petition the planning board, and then that went to you all for closure. Now, I guess my primary reason for coming to you all and asking you to reconsider this is a safety issue. If you have ever, and I would, I would ask you to go out to Locust Street and drive down it, and then try to get back out of it, because the Locust Street is extremely steep, very steep, and then you come out on Cragmont Road, you can't see very well at all, and then you're trying to pull out off of a very steep incline. And so I believe it's a safety hazard to try to get in and out of Locust Street. Now, you know, that's my main reason for coming to you. There's only one house past me on it. It might even be to my disadvantage because Locust Springs has a number of houses on it, and maybe I'm just generating more traffic. But I would also mention to you that the land usage code talks about cul-de-sacs and states cul-de-sacs, quote, "shall not be used to avoid connection with an existing street." Now, these streets, the cul-de-sac in the now end of Locust Street is 20 feet apart at most. So clearly, the cul-de-sac was, prevented Locust Street from going through. It was on the tax map, it was a through right-of-way. And so I'm not sure that the land use code was followed there, and I'm not sure about the street closing procedures. It states that all property owners whose property abuts the street must sign the petition. Honestly, I question that. That happened. But again, you know, I'm not trying to dicker over the procedural stuff as much as say, "Hey, go out there and see if you think it's safe or not," because it's not. And the solution is merely 20 feet away. He's built the road, he's got the cul-de-sac. Yeah, it messes with his development a little bit, but it's no sweat to get Locust Street where it was, and that's what the rules say we should do, and it's a safety thing.
Matt, he needs to, what, go see Josh? Get this up in front of the planning board?
Well, not in front of, we'll have to go back and look and see. I think it's been, this was done at least a year ago, I believe.
Quite a while.
It's been a while since we've closed that right-of-way. But I'd be glad to talk to you about it some and see what, and go back and just refresh my memory on what we even, I'll be honest, I don't recall.
If you'll just get up with Matt.
But yeah, if you'll give me a call, we'll talk about it.
I did call Josh, I guess, and he referred me to the planning person.
With Josh as the planner, but Josh hasn't been here since this was done. I was only here on the last.
Correct, and that's why he referred me to the planning person. He said, "Oh, I'm new here, I don't know about this."
Well, we'll talk, we can talk about it and see.
Good, thank you. Phil Bessesi.
Hello, Bessesi, 15 Highway Drive. I especially want to thank you for the work done on State Street. It's really good that we can do the engineering and construction and project management in-house and save a lot of overhead. We probably had no legal fees for signing contracts either, and that's a good one. I want to thank you for doing that well, and just keep up the good work on contracting. We're going to have an OUP on Carver Center one way or the other, and maybe we can use that, some model of things that can be done in-house rather than designed, built by a contractor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Phil. All right, that's in citizen comment. Now we'll get communications. First we'll have Chief Steve Paget, Police Department.
Good evening. For the police report, it's our semi-annual report, so it's the first six months of 2014. For the calls for service, we were actually up 4% from the same period of last year in 2013. Incident reports are, what is that, 133? Citations, 105, and our DWIs are 12, so that's 50% down from last year at the same period of time period. Total arrests was 204. In these arrests, in April, we arrested a 17-year-old homeless male from Stokes County on numerous vehicle breaking and entries, and charged him with seven felonies and four misdemeanors. So officers caught the suspect in the vehicle off of Ash Street. But we would like to remind folks not to leave any type of items of value in plain view of your vehicle, in your vehicle, and also make sure you lock those. It seems like that every year we end up having several of these, and it's basically, in this situation, this young man went in for change in vehicles, a lot of people leave their change, loose change and such, so we would like to remind folks to make sure you don't leave any type of valuable items and make sure you secure your vehicles. Of that, there was 325 arrests, and our accidents, we had 86 accidents, 77 of them was property damage, and then only nine with personal injury, which is about the same last year. It wasn't anything alarming there. On drug violations, we had 94. 72 was misdemeanor, and 22 was felony, and we made several felony drug arrests for possession with the intent to manufacture, sell, and deliver. The drugs ranged from marijuana to heroin to psychedelic mushrooms and prescription medications. And we also seized three handguns during these arrests, so that's something that we haven't seen in the past. A lot of your, a lot of the drug violations are, we're finding folks carrying weapons now, and that's a little bit alarming for our safety. Our training hours, we had 1,160 training hours. Officer Denton received his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate from the state. This certification is based on training and education. It's the highest law enforcement certificate that you can obtain through the state of North Carolina. We currently have nine officers that receive this award, that's working at the, and that's the most in the department's history. We have one more that's already applied and has been accepted, and we're awaiting his certification, so that'll make it 10. We're really proud of that as far as our training goes. We participated with Operation Medicine Drop. This is now, I think we're in the fifth, five or six years of participating with that. This provides people with a safe way to dispose of unwanted or expired prescription medication while preventing accidental poisonings, and it's also protecting our environment. We had 15,283 dosage units that we collected and turned over for proper disposal of that, those drugs and items. The domestic violence, it's a campaign that's been going on through Buncon County. I think this campaign speaks for itself. In 2013, you know, that Buncon County had the, had its record number of domestic violence homicides. We had eight in Buncon County alone in 2013, and ranked third in the state, which is probably not a very good stat to have. So the reason this is really important to us is since 1994, half of Black Mountain's homicides were domestic violence related. So you know, that's something that we fought through the years since '94. A couple statistics, or one in four women will be, will report domestic violence. That's only one in four. Typically, there's more than that that does not report domestic violence. Every nine seconds, a woman is abused. A child's exposure to a father's abusing mother is the strongest risk factor for transmitting violent behavior from one generation to the next. So that's why it's really important for us to focus on that. There was a group of Buncon County leaders introduced a plan to reduce domestic violence through better coordination, protection, and enforcement, and we have joined with those local law enforcement agencies to support these efforts, and the comprehensive plan is listed above. We're still working on that, they're still working on putting a lot of things together. It's got a little ways to go, but it's already, they've already implemented several of the plans, and we look forward to hopefully reducing that through the county and also through our own jurisdiction. We had the Walk to School event, which was an event all the kids seem to enjoy every year, and our Safety Saturday was something that we partnershiped with the Fire Department on. I think that it was the first year, but we had a pretty decent turnout, and everyone enjoyed themselves, very informative. Just remind you to make sure you wear your seat belts and do not taxi and drive. Our reserve hours, we had 905 reserve hours, which is a cost savings to the town of $14,299. These are reserve hours, the reserve officers that come in and volunteer their time, so a lot of our events can take place, as far as the Fourth of July and Sowerwood and the Christmas parade. So we rely greatly on those reserve officers to come in, and we are also happy to, we put two new officers on. On the left is Ryan Patton, on the right is Brandon Akins. They're going through their training, so we hope that they'll contribute to that reserve unit also and help these events. We've had a lot of 5Ks and different type of events here lately, so we do rely on our reserves heavily. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Good work. Next, Steve, from the Fire Department.
Mayor, Board. Fire Department had 652 calls in the city, 375 calls in the district, and we were up about 1% from the last report. The alarming number is the number of average times that we're on more than one call at a time. That averages up to be 60. I can count up to as many as five calls at one time, and we don't have but five people working shifts, so some of those calls, we didn't, we had to rely on some other departments to help us. So that number just keeps getting higher, for a total of 19,256 hours spent on calls. Property exposed to fire, we had 1.7 million exposed in the city and 1.6 in the district. And we did not meet our goal of less than 10% in this report, and that's because by the time we got to this one fire, it was already on the ground, so we can't control that.
This is the one that was up in Charmel, Charmel, the Acres?
No, this was another fire on the west end of town, so if it's on the ground, we get there, there's not a whole lot we can do with it. The damage is done, and the loss is there, so that's why that, we didn't meet our goal there. Inspections, we did 569 business inspections with 700, or 707 residential inspections. We had 53 public education events, and we're getting more and more of these events, and we, like I've told you in the past, some of these are due to tours that come to the station, anybody that drops by and wants us to talk to their children, we count those. And now that the park's open across the street, we've started going over there and talking to kids and giving out stickers and some kind of stuff there, just to let them know that we're there, and if they need us, they can come look at a fire truck, so. Training, we had 4,327 hours spent on training, and then we had 348 and a half hours spent on extra duty. As Chief Paget said, we had our first Safety Saturday. It went very well. We're going to continue to do this, and we were even talking about doing a mini Safety Saturday, so we can get a short one in and then have a one big event each year, kind of like we do at Open House. So we'll get the word out a little better next year, and I'm sure we'll have more people. Talk about training to us a little bit. These are pictures from the Buncon County Training Facility. I got to take the whole department over there and train one day. We were over there for eight hours, and during that time, Chief Scott Burnett with the City of Asheville was gracious enough to send us a battalion, or an engine from one of his battalions out here to cover Black Mountain, so that I could take all my people out there and train for one day. That was very kind of him to offer that, and he offered that to every fire department in this county, so that goes to say the relationship that the county and the city are working together with fire departments to train and become better. We have started on park rhythms, doing a medical standby with our UTV down there that's turned out to be very big. We get to do a lot of PR down there and talk to children there as well, while the adults listen to music, and we've heard nothing but good things about going in there for the standby. I believe the mayor had asked Chief Bannerman before he retired to talk a little bit about, you had seen a thing on TV about getting out of your house when it catches on fire. I don't know much about the conversation between you and him, as he was walking out my door, he said, "Oh, by the way, the mayor's asked for this," and so here we're going to do. What I'm going to do is, there's a short video, it's about 2 minutes and 50 seconds, and when Darlene starts playing it, if she'll enlarge it, you can see a little bit better, and I'm going to talk while it's playing and kind of give you, it's in the bottom right-hand corner, kind of give you a little timeline here. Kind of give you a little timeline here. This is how most fires start, turn out small, start out small. How do I do it? Anyway, let's say you see this fire in your house, you go call 911. If you live in Black Mountain or East Bunkin Fire District, when you call 911, you're going to go to the central dispatch center in Asheville. And then they're going to transfer you to Black Mountain Fire Department. That phone call's going to take about a minute. By the time you talk to them and talk to us, and we get the information we need, there's a minute gone right there. And you see the fire is almost a minute into it right there. Then once we get the, we get the call, we get the information we need, and our goal is to get out the door in three minutes. That's, we've got to get our gear on, we've got to get a dispatch, we've got to get into the trucks. There's a lot that go on. Putting on your gear can take up to 45 seconds. So, three minutes might seem long, but it's, on the average, that's what everybody shoots for, out the door in three minutes. Bigger departments have a minute, but when they, when they're bigger than we are, they have a little bit more, a few more people. So, anyway, so here we're, we'll say we're rolling, we're four minutes into it, and our average scene time in both districts on, that's time it takes us to get to your house on average is six minutes. And that's a little high, but we do cover out to High Rock Acres, up to Laurel Ridge, so those times have to average in. So, if you live in the city, we're going to get to you a little bit quicker. But anyway, you see the fire, it's getting, it's getting bigger, the smoke's coming down, the heat's, the heat's building up in the room, so you don't have any time. So if you see your house is on fire, don't try to save everything. Get out and shut the door behind you. Don't, that's so we can cut the oxygen off and slow the fire down. You got to leave the door open, that just feeds the oxygen through, and it makes the fire bigger. See, these, these things are exploding because they've reached ignition temperature, and they're just, the whole room's full of hot gases. So that's what you see fire, on fire there. And we're two minutes and 37 seconds into this fire. So, if we're on our timeline, we're about 11 to 12 minutes. We're still not there yet. So by the time we get there, that fire's going to be twice as big. And depending on whose house you're in, that fire can be a lot. The more stuff you have in your house, the more rapid the fire's going to, going to spread. But anyway, so there's a little short timeline on how important it is to get out of your house. Get out, shut the door, and just wait on us to get there, and we'll do the work. Don't try to go in and save anything. There's nothing worth saving that costs your life, so. Is there anything else I can answer, Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm just glad that you showed that to the public. And just because, I mean, I wasn't aware of it either until I was just looking and reading the article and just, just how fast. And especially with all the different synthetics that we have in our houses, carpets.
We're constantly being trained on, on green buildings, lightweight construction. Houses aren't built like they used to be built. So, these fires, more and more people are dying in houses that are built in lightweight construction. That's just the way it is. It's cheaper, it's quicker, and that's the way it's going to go. So we have to stay trained, and we have to have the equipment to, to fight these fires, so. That's all I have.
Very good, very good.
Any questions?
I have a question, Chief. Now, you spoke about the different times where you had more than five, six calls at a time. And we had, have assistance from other departments. On the average, how many times did that happen? Could you?
Did we have to have mutual aid? Now, I don't have that number with me.
No ballpark?
Probably, probably mutual aid, probably on an average of five times a month on mutual aid. The rest of it, the normal average, probably two or three calls a time.
Okay. So if you had about two or three more firemen, that would have reduced that mutual aid call, right?
I always want more firemen, yes, sir. Oh, sorry, firefighters. I don't care whether they're men or women, they're both good.
Okay, thanks.
Right. Chief, I just wanted to say, speaking of good PR, I was glad to see that one of your former interns was able to get some publicity to the Fire Department on Good Morning America in Town Square. Where Madeline put up the sign about how you all rock.
That was awesome. We, every school year, we have an intern that comes to us, and Madeline just stuck. She's, she's the only one we've ever let do a whole year, I believe. She loves the Fire Department, she loves what she does, and she went to New York and she made a sign.
Yep.
And she was out there at Good Morning America and got us on it, and then called us, and she was excited. So Marilyn, Marilyn made us famous on Good Morning America. Shout out.
Well deserved, thank you.
She's a good girl, so she's going to start AB tech this fall on my way through the way.
Chief?
One thing I want to mention is, we know the professionalism that, that your department has. Same thing with our police department. What I'd like for the town to know is also how you guys stretch your fingers to, to do some little things like Town Square. I understand that the police department is now going over and unlocking the bathrooms to where that can allow, you know, the, the parks stay open a little bit longer. And I understand that, and I've heard your willingness to, to help maybe do some watering and, and weeding when your guys have some downtime or slack time. And that's what makes this town Black Mountain. And this is, and that kind of attitude is what makes our town special above a lot of other places in this country. And I just want to say I appreciate it from the whole board.
Thank you. My, Pat says Town of Black Mountain reports to the Fire Department, so my loyalty's to this town, not just to the Fire Department, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Matt, can you lead us through the agenda, please?
Sure. You've got the adoption of minutes from your agenda workshop and your regular session in July. You've got a budget amendment for the clock at Town Square. The money's been raised for that. If you recall, the procedure that we're going to use now for improvements at Town Square is that, that we will, that, that expenditure will run through the town, and then we will, we will receive the money back from the Greenway Foundation or whoever has raised the money privately. That way, we have a paper trail for how that's, for how that's accomplished. So you have a budget amendment for that. You've got, and then you've got a handful of calls for public hearings. You've got a call for public hearing for text amendments for Board of Adjustment changes. The legislature in 2013 made some changes to how the Board of Adjustments handles appeals and variances and some procedural issues that way. And so you need a, a public hearing to make those text amendments. You have a call for public hearing for text amendments to allow printing operations. We allowed that before our land use code was amended in 2010, and it just, it was just omitted, and you need to, to amend your, your, your code to allow printing operations. You have a call for public hearing for text amendments to define a playhouse. If you'll recall, we have a public hearing tonight defining a structure, and one of the exemptions is a playhouse. And in a, in an effort to be proactive, we're trying, we're going to call a public hearing to define a playhouse so that someone can't build a giant shed and call it a playhouse and get around some of the building requirement requirements for structures. And then you've got a call for public hearing for text amendments for home occupations. This is an issue that we've debated for a while, and, and so we have that on the agenda for tonight, and that is your consent agenda.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion of any of these before we vote on them? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Citizen comment before new business? Anybody wish to speak? Plenty of time to decide. Doesn't look like anyone wishes to speak. So now we've got on the new business. Take that, Matt.
Yes, we've got a request to award the bid for sidewalk construction on Montry Road that you alluded to earlier. We have, we, we had a bid opening last month, and JLS, who did the work last year, was also the low bid this year, $79,155. We've requested you award that bid to them so they can begin construction.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Unfinished business? Now we get into the public hearings. We got the first public hearing for text amendments for the definition of a structure of the land use code as recommended by the planning board. So we need a motion to open up the public hearing.
I so wish.
All in favor? Do we have anyone that wishes to speak to this? We've got four public hearings tonight, so.
If, if you, if you, if you don't mind, I would request maybe Josh could just give like a brief, maybe just carry the whole time and give a, a brief synopsis of each, of each issue as, as you go through, just so the public understands what, what the issue
I think part of my job, I guess, if I've been hired, is to look at our land use code and see if there are things that are missing amongst any of the other duties that I've got. But pretty much what you've got in front of you tonight with these four public hearings is that. It's some things that, that I think and staff and the planning board saw that may have been lacking in our land use code, so they're, they're in front of you for, for your consideration tonight. The definition of structure, which is the one we're speaking of now, we don't currently define structure in our land use code. So, I'd be glad to read all this out if you'd like, what the definition says, but in a nutshell, what it does is define the term structure so we can use that term when we're enforcing our code and, and doing permits.
Matt, any questions of Josh about this? If not, then I'll go ahead and announce for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we need to adopt the ordinance.
Well, first, adopt the statement of consistency. Yes, right, we just.
To adopt the recommended ordinance, O-14-05, inconsistency statement is presented. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So we need to do number three, I think, Mike.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah. I thought you were doing four.
I'm doing, I'm doing this one right here under, for the definition of structure, a motion for consideration. We opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing, and now we're adopting the recommended.
That's what I'm going to do. It's my fault, yeah.
Can we read the motion?
Well, the motion is, is to, from the, from here as an ordinance, to amend the text sections of the land use code, Apex A of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Black Mountain. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No.
There should be two separate motions, though. One for the statement of consistency before you adopt the ordinance.
It's not on the here, but it's on the others. It's not in this. Let me go ahead and take care of the, the consistency statement. Make a motion that we approve ordinance number O-14-05 and consistency state, statement as presented.
Can they do the, the, the motion?
It's better if you have a motion to approve the consistency statement unless that's supposed to then have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Is that like number three on this, this agenda?
It is on the agenda. I think it's not in the, it's not in the, the request for board action, but if you look at the, if you just look at the agenda, each one, each one of your public hearings is going to have, the first thing to do is to adopt the statement of consistency for text amendments, and then you adopt the ordinance.
So the motion you'd like is a, a motion to adopt the statement of consistency for text amendments to section 1 dot 2 dot 3 of the land use code?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now a motion to adopt the ordinance, O-14-05, to amend text sections of the land use code, appendix A, section 1, 2, 3. Definitions, the code ordinances of Town of Black Mountain as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's done. Now, we're going to have a public hearing for text amendments for multifamily residential of the land use code as recommended by the planning board. So I need a motion to open the public hearing on the text amendments for multifamily residential of the land use code. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wish to speak to that before we let Josh explain it? Doesn't look so, so go ahead.
So, so this section 5.16.1, which is multifamily residential in our land use code, currently, we define residential in this section, or excuse me, we define multifamily residential in these two sections as more than three, whereas in previous sections in our land use code, we describe, we divine it as three or more. So, in order to make it consistent throughout the land use code, that's what the planning board and staff has got in front of you tonight to change it from more than three to three or more, to include three. Probably didn't make a lot of sense, but we have duplexes, and then you have, anything with three or more is considered multifamily.
Motion to approve. To adopt the statement. We need to close the public hearing.
We got to close the public hearing first. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right, now we need to adopt the statement of consistency for the text amendments for section 5-16-1 of the land use code. Motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now to adopt the ordinance, O-14-06, to amend the section for the multifamily residential of the code of ordinances.
I move to adopt as presented.
Okay, any, any questions? I've got one question I wanted to ask on this, and that is, when these become, these multifamilies, and it's, let's just say that it starts out as an apartment, and you've got one owner, you've got three units, then what, what has to occur then, or what can occur if it's, if it's in an area to where you basically are allowed structures, but if you were to sell them individually, maybe that would exceed the number of units for that area? Would that prohibit them from going ahead and dividing that and selling it as three townhouses?
It's possible, depending on where, what jurisdiction or what zoning district it's located in. Could be.
So that if it's in the zoning district, that's just, to make it simple, it allows four, okay?
Right.
And you ended up having two, two buildings there, all right? That would initially meet the requirements of that zoning. But if this person decided then to sell those and to have six, is he or she going to be able to sell those?
I think those apartments, three, you're talking about, you're describing two triplexes.
Yeah.
Those are multifamilies, whether rental units or owner, separate ownership, and that's legal stuff that I do. But the character of the structure hasn't changed, whether it's single ownership of three apartments or three owners and townhomes, still a multifamily structure.
That answers my question. All right, then, the motion has been made. Any other comments? If not, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go to the next public hearing. This is a public hearing for text amendments for adoption of building codes of land use as recommended by the planning board. I need a motion, both for a public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public? Not Josh?
Okay, currently, this section 2.1.1 references to 2006 Building Code, residential, plumbing, mechanical, et cetera. What it needs to say is the most recent and up-to-date code. So, what this is going to do is allow us to place in our land use code that we will reference the most up-to-date building code from here on out, so we won't have to come back and do this again for this section.
Move to close the public hearing?
You're making a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Close it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need a motion for the statement of consistency.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we need to adopt the ordinance, O-14-07. Need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's fine. For the fourth public hearing, it's a text amendment for tattoo, body piercing, and frauders of the land use code as recommended by the planning board, I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Anybody wish to speak to this? Anybody wish to speak to this? If not, then Josh?
Bring us up today.
Sure. In the past few months, we've had a few inquiries about someone opening up a tattoo parlor. Currently, in our land use code, we don't address these, and staff didn't feel comfortable fitting it in any other category we've got. So we thought that it would be a good idea to come up with a new use and establish conditions for a tattoo parlor. What staff did was to pull other locations in the area, Forest City, Marion, Asheville, kind of get some ideas of how they were addressing these issues, and this is kind of what you've got in front of you. The way it reads is, there would be three zoning districts that tattoo parlors would be allowed to locate in, central business, highway business, and heavy industrial. All three of these zoning districts would require a conditional use permit in order for the tattoo parlor to locate there. What that means is, you couldn't just come in off the street and get a permit from us in the planning and inspections department. You would have to go through a, our board of adjustment for them to issue that conditional use permit to you. There are seven conditions that we have currently placed on tattoo parlors in this proposed amendment, things such as distance requirements from another location that was, that was doing tattoos, things such as churches, schools, child daycare centers, public parks, residentially zoned areas, residentially used property, and establishments that have a current ABC license. So the current amendment in front of you states there would be 500 foot, that they could not be located within 500 foot of those establishments. Also, they would not be able to be used as home occupations. The people that would be in charge or would be working at the tattoo parlors would have to go through the Buckham County Health Department for their licenses to make sure they meet all those requirements. And of course, Buckham County would be doing regular inspections, which are annual inspections on these types of establishments, which they do today. I know there's been some questions about how Buckham County does it. Buckham County is a little bit different than Black Mountain or Asheville or Forest City just because it's a county and they don't have a whole lot of, I guess they don't, they don't regulate things as stringent sometimes as municipalities do, but they fit theirs in under professional services. So it's not a conditional use permit required for them, and pretty much they're permitted by right in all their commercial districts in Buckham County. So this is a map that you probably can't see, depending on where you're sitting, but what it does is, kind of shows the 500-foot buffer from just three of the multiple things that we've mentioned in the ordinance, which would be churches, daycares, and schools. So I know you can't see it, but there's quite a bit of locations that tattoo parlors wouldn't be able to locate, of course, and there's some more than likely highway business, highway business jurisdiction that they would be able to locate in.
Well, for those watching on TV, the largest area would be the orange area.
Correct.
Right now. And of course, down, close to, across from Ingalls Warehouse, as we go down, yes, that area in there, most of that orange that he's pointing to now would not be, because a lot of that in there has, there's the Pizga Brewery, so that's an ABC license, so that's 500 feet from that. How does that work? Is that 500 feet from the property line?
It would be the closest, yes.
Or how, I mean, did it go to the center of the business?
No, it would be property lines.
So it's 500 feet from the property, okay. And then if you move a little bit east, you've got some residential homes there, then you've got even further east, you've got further residential homes, like where Ms. Bishop used to have her fruit stand. And so that pretty much takes care of that whole area in there. I mean, there's very little bit that could go in that section. You might get some up here at the far end, but probably the biggest section is going to be right at the interstate interchange, right there. But even that, because if you, as you look at it, the orange on the right side of number nine has some residential homes there, so that's going to stretch across the street and take in like the huddle house in that area.
How far is the ABC store from that?
That's right.
So Josh, if I was an ABC, I mean, tattoo parlor person.
Right.
And I wanted to find three locations in town to put a parlor in, give me three locations.
I don't know that I can do that, Carlos, just simply because the three things that are located on here now, churches, schools, and daycares, of course, we don't include ABC licenses, so I would have to research where those are located, all those. Everything's zoned residentially, would have to have a buffer around it. So this map would get very messy very quickly. With some research, I could probably figure that out, but I could not tell you right now where that would be.
So just given the code we have in effect now, it would be very difficult to find a place where that, for one of those to go, right?
It could be. If the code we have in effect now, they wouldn't be allowed, period. Right. The one that's amended, or the proposed, then yes.
Right. Anybody from the public want to speak? We'll close the public hearing then. Do I have a motion? Excuse me.
Did I understand that we're loosening up the present ordinance? The present ordinance, it's hard to do a change to the parlor, now we're setting some rules that will allow it?
No, actually, it's impossible to have one under the current ordinance because it's not a permitted use. We're making it a permitted use, but with some stringent guidelines to where we can guide and direct where we want those businesses to be.
All right. Now I understand that. But the question becomes, is it necessary to have a tattoo parlor in Black Mountain?
Well, but that's not for us to decide. We could, this board could decide it.
Well, I mean, if you don't.
But if somebody, but if somebody comes in and requests it.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying is, if you don't do this new ordinance, the old ordinance is out of it to keep them up.
I think the town attorney has advised us that totally banning it creates some problems.
Right.
Okay.
You know, in that, certainly, you know, that it's, that the legality of excluding completely.
Right.
Is, creates some problems. So that's really why this is being introduced, to provide some method to have one, to make it as stringent as possible. Mr. Mayor, this one, can board speak now about the matter, or do we need to wait?
See, why not? Go ahead and.
Well, there's been some discussion at the board level about excluding the central business district.
Right.
And I'm interested and open to that, to that. We can make that amendment. I don't mind making that motion, but we might want to discuss it beforehand, making it just the, making it just the central business district and the highway business. I'm sorry, making it the heavy, I'm sorry, heavy industrial or highway business district, and excluding the central business district.
Why don't we go ahead and let's, let's go ahead and close the public hearing unless you got any more questions of Josh, and then we'll do the statement, and then when we do the adoption of the ordinance, then if you wish to make some changes in your motion.
I'll move to close the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt statement of consistency?
Matt, should we do, should we go ahead and debate what changes before we do it?
I think if you're going to make, I think if you're going to, if you're going to debate making changes, Ron, I think they probably should, they should.
Discuss your revision of the proposed ordinance, then go to your statement of consistency.
That's right, because otherwise it's not going to be consistent.
Didn't we in the past do statement of consistency afterwards?
I don't know as it matters as long as you do it separately. Case just out of Charlotte today with the Court of Appeals has got a lot more picky about the detail in your statement of consistency, so I keep it as a separate motion. I don't know if there's a requirement that it happen first or second.
Yeah, I'd rather have, if boards, for future stuff, let's just, let's just switch three and four from now on and just have an answer. That way we don't have to worry about.
You get in a situation like this where you're revising.
Exactly. So you'll just mark then, future things then.
We'll make a note of that.
Okay. All right, so we'll wait to do the statement of consistency after. So do I hear someone give a motion to adopt ordinance 0-14-08?
I believe if we're going to have a change, you want that motion to amend the proposal for.
You have to make the motion first and then make the amendment. We've got.
Well, you got, you end up with a motion on the floor and another motion in silence, but it's, it makes sense to us, but it messes the Robert and his rules.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, yeah, if you're, if you're sure that the discussion is going to take a turn towards making some changes to this, you ought to make a motion to amend the proposed ordinance.
I would make a motion.
Somebody makes a motion, the complete motion as they want it revised, and then we don't have to do this. So if you got a motion.
If you know, that's true. If you know what you want.
If you know exactly what you want to say, then go ahead and tell us now, then we don't have to read this.
Well, I'll give it a shot. To adopt, to adopt, can I say, now, Sneak, can I say to adopt ordinance, this ordinance, to adopt ordinance O-14-08 to amend text sections of the land use code, appendix A, section 1.2.3, definitions, highway business district, heavy industrial, and chapter five, additional requirements, section 5.22, tattoo body piercing studio of the code of ordinances of the Town of Black Mountain.
So basically, what you're going to, what you're proposing then is this ordinance is without the central business district.
Without the central business district.
Not changing the conditions, just saying, take central business district.
Does that work, Ron?
Yeah, all right.
At the end of that motion, amending the proposed ordinance by removing the central business district.
Okay, he just didn't read it.
That's all we're doing then, is just taking.
That's, well, that's the, that's the motion that you have.
Yeah, I didn't amend it, I'm just making that motion.
You're just making the motion.
I think that was my instruction.
That way it makes, I think it's.
Yeah, if you do it, then you're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my motion, that makes sense.
Any discussion?
I just want to say that I fully agree with Larry's motion to, to remove the central business district. Just looking from, you know, the map that Matt and Josh have provided us, it's pretty restrictive there to start with. And as I was thinking about this this weekend, the previous members of this board and of the staff, Gay and Mary Leonard are in the audience here, they've put considerable time and effort into creating a vibrant downtown that's family-friendly. And when you look at, you know, the tattoo and body piercing parlors, you're talking about what is in essence a minor medical procedure being done in an area where we've come to make it a both historic and tourist attraction that's vibrant with different areas. I don't think that they are consistent in that area. I think that they are much more appropriate in highway business or the heavy industrial district than what we've seen. So I think that it's fitting for, in honor of what they've done previously, to honor and continue that legacy, and also to keep it that way for those coming after us.
Very, 100%.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Josh.
Now we do it. Now we got to do.
Now, we got to do the statement of consistency. Motion?
Go for it, Maggie.
Now so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Although we're not consistent, I approve this consistency.
All right, that's, that's okay. Now, communication from staff.
Bronz Snead. I have nothing to new, a new rule to tell you. Slide update on the settings case. I think at the last board meeting, I reported that as we filed, as the record's going up on appeal, the bond company petitioned the court to add some ordinances that were not before the trial court judge, and we considered the motion for summary judgment, but the trial court judge ruled that they should not be a part of the record. The insurance companies then petitioned the Court of Appeals to find that they should be made part of the record, and once again, the Court of Appeals agreed that if it wasn't before the trial court judge, it shouldn't be in the record if the court of appeals considered. We went on that motion. We're now in the stage where the bond companies prepared their briefs on appeal. Those will be filed, and then within the next 30 days, we file ours, and then we wait.
All right, Matt?
I just have one announcement I would like to acknowledge. Plan Director Josh Harold, he was appointed to the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Association of Zoning Officers. That's a statewide position, and I think it speaks well of him, and he will represent us well on that, on that board for this next year, and I wanted to acknowledge that.
Very good. Congratulations. All right, I've made my announcements. Does the board of all of them have anything that they wish to say before we close?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I appreciate your comments about the public services saving the taxpayers money like they, like they did on this, this recent digging up and putting the meters and things in on State Street. But I just, just want to give kudos to Jamie and to Matt, because that whole philosophy has changed, Matt, since you've come on board. For an example, the money that was saved on the town hardware, we quoted that out. And I don't remember exactly how much savings that was, but it.
About $6,000 in savings there. It was a smaller project, but.
Smaller project, but the town needs to know that we, that Matt and his staff, all of them are doing that all the time. They look at both sides of the coin and try to do what's good for these taxpayers, for all of us taxpayers. And sometimes I think that just goes without notice, and people don't understand and realize just how efficient these guys are running. They get a lot of, a lot of complaints and people fussing at them from town residents, but we have got a heck of a town staff in this town, people who care about and watch how we're spending taxpayer money. And I just thank you.
I'd also like to follow up on that, for the, most folks don't really take the time to look or have privated that information, that is, of the size of the municipality and the number of employees that that municipality has. The Town of Black Mountain has one of the, when you do the ratio of the population of the town to the number of employees, we've got, we've got one of the best ratios there is, in the fact that we have very few town employees, but yet they're doing a phenomenal job.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to mention one thing, that former mayor, Michael Begley, had approached Matt and made just about some, I think it goes back to some work he had done in some of his years of service, and some thoughts about the east end of town and the business district, and he just wanted to share some things with us. And so Matt and I will be meeting with Michael, and if we come up with anything, we'll bring it back to the board to discuss.
Very good. Very good.
And if I could, just briefly, I wanted to commend both the staff and everyone here in town on a, late last month, Black Mountain was included in the top 18 small cities in North Carolina by City Journals, where we were in the top half of that ranking, and it's a, it's an absolute tribute to everyone, both our public safety, our town staff, the citizens here, that have made that such a desirable place to come. I also wanted to just briefly ask Matt as well if we will have someone going to the Stormwater Summit that Land of Skies is putting on in October.
I think we do, no, we're trying to.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay. And that was all I had.
Okay, if that's all the comments from the, from the board, then I need to get a motion that we go into closed session to discuss personnel matters as permitted in NCGS 143 through 1811. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go in closed session.